All right, our study session tonight is starring Mitchell Horton.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, we're here to talk about our adoption of our building codes. As you can see in the packet, it's quite extensive. I'll talk a little bit in general because the amount of time I have is kind of limited. And we can't cover all the topics, but at the same time, if you have questions or specific questions, you can ask me. I'm going to start out, the adoption of the building codes. Now, there is a state requirement that we follow the state minimum code as a minimum standard. So, we're bringing our ordinances into compliance with that just to make sure because we still have some other amendments that we have adopted over the years that's in here. Basically, the Uniform Building Code Commission is the agency that was created to do the adoption of the minimum code for the state of Oklahoma. And this is multiple codes, it was done in 2009. The OUBCC has technical review committees that actually review and make recommendations. They're actually contractors, architects, engineers, builders, inspectors, fire inspectors, anybody that has any interest in the codes and how they're implemented or applied. Typically, we're on a three-year cycle, but it's kind of on a six-year cycle. We're trying to get back into a three-year cycle. They are public meetings and public hearings like we do with ours as well. Sorry, it's kind of hard to talk with this on, so.
Yes, it is, I apologize.
So, the city of Yukon is required to enforce the minimum codes that are adopted. We are allowed to make ours more restrictive. The codes, the way that we've done them, we've did our public hearings through the planning commission. We had three study sessions that we did last, last fall. We started actually in May 13th and did a review and continued June 10th and August 12th study sessions and then actually made recommendations to send them forward to the council. The reason it's taken a little time, we have some, as you will see, we'll talk about, there's a lot of work that goes into putting it into ordinance form and making sure that we get on the agenda with the city council so we don't have a full agenda. So, that's why we've taken a little time to get to this point, to be able to discuss it and put it on the agenda for next week or the next council meeting so we can go ahead and do the adoptions. What we're recommending right now for the adoption process, we got the 2015 International Residential Code, 2015 International Building Code, 2015 International Plumbing Code, 2015 International Mechanical Code, 2015 International Fuel Gas Code, 2015 International Fire Code, and the 2014 National Electric Code. So, these are our base documents that we're talking about. We have, like I said, made some amendments that we've always had such as, you know, things that we do and have recommended was a change is in the design and review criteria for buildings. Our current ordinance only requires one side of the building, 75% of it, to be something other than metal. So, brick, rock, wood, glass is what it is. The recommendation from the planning commission is to have all four sides now have something other than metal. Because of the type of structures we're getting in the areas in town, that was one of the things that they're recommending that would be a different change than what we've had in the past. And buildings that we'd be talking about would be like O'Reilly's and some of those structures. And if they were to have a variance, they would have to ask for a variance or an exception in that. And we felt like the owners would be the ones, that were adjacent property owners, would have some kind of input. I'm not sure, you know, if that's something the council wants, but it's something that we could have a metal building go in like at West End Point or somewhere like that, which we do have one that is a special building, but it was Atwoods and that was part of the deal. They want to look that country, western-type feel, so that's a little bit different. But what we also did with Atwoods, if you remember right, we required a lot more landscaping on the adjacent street to the west, which is West End Point. We did trees on 30-foot centers as well as on the south boundary. We required extra trees to kind of soften that up. But like I said, that's kind of an unusual situation, but that's the style. So, it looks nice, it's going to look nice. We're making sure it blends into the area. Everybody within that boundary, using the PUD, which we used as a variance tool, had some input on that. So, there is some exceptions that we can do and go through some processes, but it would be specific to the area that we're looking at when we're talking about that. Some of the other things that we did include is a waste enclosure. We were a rear-load type waste enclosure for our trash surfaces. And now, we've changed to a front-load, so we're making sure that we made some changes in those enclosures, the gates, to do the front-load. One of the things that we have found is that the front-load's got more wheel weight on the front and we're having problems with some parking lots, and so we're taking care of that. Also, the backing up of them, we've taken consideration. And these are some amendments, the kind of amendments that we normally make, they're not really specific to the code, but there are some ideas that we talk about and we do take in consideration. With this, you can see that, you know, when we did the ordinance, there's an ordinance on front of what we're doing, what it actually says. In there, it talks about OUBCC, that's actually the state amendments. Anything that we did does not have that on it. The study document that we had is also attached to it. It's got blue lines, red lines, and it tells what we did and what we changed. So, it kind of gives you an idea. Some of it's formatting, some of it's adding words, so. So, it's one of those things, like I said, we did, like I said, go through the hearing process. We do look at the surrounding areas and what they do for codes and the amendments they make. We do actually have a group that works as the, we call it the Area-Wide Code Officials Group. We actually look at everybody, what they're doing, what the codes are, what the new things that are coming, issues that we're having. And that's things that we do add to the codes to make sure that we address those things. Like electrical, for example, the code allows a number 14 wire on a 15-amp breaker. Well, the things that we found over the years, we require a number 12 wire on a 20-amp breaker to allow for the things, the nuisances trips and stuff like that, that we come across and have issues with. That's something that's been in our code forever. It's been at least 30 years or so. That's something that we do in the metro area. So, there is things that we do look at, there are issues. That's mainly what we do, some changes. One of the things that we did have that it was recommended to do away with is our garage floors are four inches lower than the house floor. But we're having an older group of individuals that are buying the houses. So, one of the things is the code does not require that anymore. It just requires that the floor slopes to the garage door. So, the vapors or waters that spilled on the floor, you know, goes or migrates towards the garage door. So, that's one of the things that was kind of recommended to do away with because of the aging community, the excess to get into the house from the garage because that four-inch lip is causing a problem. So, things like that, we've looked at, tried to take in consideration. Talked in depth about that as well in the metro area too, and issues that everybody's having. Things that we do, like on the gas piping, one of the things that the code allows, it allows you to size the gas pipe according to the fuel load. But one of the things that we found is in the future, people are always adding extra appliances that are updating. One of the examples that we have, that they'll run gas to a, a gas appliance, it's not put there, but it's capped off for future use, but sometimes it's undersized or they use something that is higher volume. A lot of these kitchens now are using commercial appliances. So, we require them to bring inch and quarter to the first tap or line servicing the appliance, the first appliance. So, that's something that we look at and upgrade just to make sure that we don't have any problems where the appliance doesn't have the fuel it needs to work. So, there's things like that that we do. But that's probably some of the biggest items that we do talk about and do have. Things that we stay involved in, one of the things that I believe and Jim believes that we need to be involved in the code process, we make sure that we're involved in the code process such as we're part of OUBCC. We have several members that do go and work through the adoption process on these state codes to make sure that we stay into what is in our area, the issues that we have to address the issues. Also, bring our expertise and also it provides training. It gets us in the code where we know what we're doing. So, it is something that is very good as well as gets us in the code that we actually read the code and know what the code says. So, but this is something that takes a while. Usually, it's a six-to-eight-month project to get through the adoption of one code, going through the process, looking at all the issues. So, like I said, I've provided all the information I could think of that would be helpful. There's multiple codes. If you remember right, it was a pretty good stack of codes that we are required to adopt and required to enforce. Things that does help, we do have an R-rated like the fire department. We've got what we call ISO rating, it's called Building Effective Grading System. It's just a tool, it's not like the fire departments. It's just a tool that the, the insurance raters look at just to see. It's not a safety code, it doesn't actually look at how we enforce the codes, but we do have a number three rating in the codes adopted in the city of Yukon for residential and the commercial codes that are enforced and adopted. It looks at us like a number of permits we issue, number inspections we do, the type inspections we do, our education, so it does look at everything that we do. But like I said, it's just a tool they use, so. There's quite a bit of information here. Like I said, I didn't, with all this that we got here, it's taken us quite a few months to go through as well as when you look at it. So, I don't know any questions you may have or want to discuss or thoughts you may have that we could talk about, or issues that you may have heard from others that we have not heard from, so.
I think I have a couple of questions. So, the variance is still allowable at the municipal level?
That is correct. You're talking about a variance for whatever it may be.
Right.
The appeals that we've set up is the Board of Adjustments for Normal Appeals. So, if there's an appeal that you don't, a contractor does not agree with, they can go to the Board of Adjustments and appeal it.
Okay, and it's, and I just want to make sure that, I mean, we still have that.
Yes, when the building, yeah, and the building codes are set up, you have to have an appeal process. Our appeal process is the Board of Adjustments.
Right.
So, anything they don't agree with, way that we're enforcing it or we misinterpreted it, they can go through that process with the Board of Adjustments and appeal that.
Do we ever have a standing allowable variance? For instance, if we were to encourage most of the buildings on Main Street to remodel at some point, it would, many of them would actually be, it would be cost prohibitive due to coding. Have we ever, is there any history of saying, okay, if you're between the 400 and 500 block of Main Street, you have a different set of code? Or is each one of those need to come for, for a variant?
There is coming that we will do a little bit later, it's what's called Existing Building Code. The Existing Building Code is a point system, so you get so many points to do what you're talking about. The problem comes in, for example, One Faith Boutique, you've got that upstairs, putting an assembly use up there would be a problem because you would still have to bring fire suppression in there, but also that floor loading changes from what it is today. You know, if you just have an office up there or a living space, it's different than when you put an assembly use where you put, say, a rec center where kids are going to be in there with pinball and pool tables and stuff. Those loads change, so loads are a little bit different. But there is some things that we can do to allow existing buildings to continue to use as they are or similar use. It's when we change from that to assembly uses such as a church, such as a gathering place, a restaurant. They have different requirements. And there's some state laws that kick in for fire suppression as well as architectural, architects are required on assembly uses. Churches and any occupant load more than 50, so.
But if we need to replace the fascia or a window or things like that, we should, a business shouldn't have too much.
Normally not. Usually what the problem comes in, if somebody knows about business plans and knows how to work a business plan, they usually don't have near the problem as somebody just coming in that doesn't know anything, just wanting to start a business, hasn't checked with the tax commission or the health department, depending on what it is.
Okay.
You know, ABLE, you know, there's so many other entities they have to deal with. So, usually those other entities are usually more of an issue than that we are. But yes, we do have an appeals process for them to go through.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you so much. Jim, do you have anything to add before we break?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we'll take a seven-minute break and start at 7:00. Thank you, Mitch, that was wonderful.
Okay.
Give us some great reading later tonight.
Oh, yes.
Great job there, guy.
Do what? Very, very. It's been crazy.
The business never ends.
Uh, yeah. But we got 25 last month. I saw that 25 last month. And like yesterday, I had to bring a guy to me. This morning at 3:00, I had to send a guy. I mean, so it's not, you know, you do the deals, but then you got all this moving around. And I got a 12-year-old girl, and that's the worst. So, those are horrible. The family's so sweet, they're just precious, a precious family. You know that, that, that head works. And I forgot where he works, but I mean, he was a friend of mine. The day we met, it's not necessary. Oh, he was, you know. I said, those people work hard.
Facebook is not working. Facebook is not working. We posted that they could access this meeting via Facebook as well as Zoom and other things. We have posted that Facebook is not operating. And I don't know, here's where you can access the meeting. I recommend that Doug, you go forward with the meeting. The worst thing that happens is we'll have to turn around and do it again. Because if we do it again, we can do it in about 10, 15 minutes.
Not that, sir.
Can, can you, can you take it from the Zoom and replay it on Facebook?
Don't tell us you talked to Shelley about it.
I don't know. I don't know, because I don't know how, I'm not that techy, but.
Are you in the meeting and reschedule it or help?
No, I wouldn't reschedule.
The thing is, uh, I mean, you know, in my point of view, it's not there.
But I have a present with my chair.
It's a lot of.
It's his fault.
It's a lot of.
Shoot a 53 and come in last.
Don't get me started on that. I can't believe, I can't believe.
Did the fireman win again?
No, it's, uh, it's a video.
That's what he was saying, and Jenna's going to go ahead and post on Facebook.
They knew how to do it.
They knew how to do it.
Yeah, I'm, I can.
Well, just a few weeks and we're up again.
Yeah. The fact that we have the Facebook with the Zoom link, and then we're going to post that at Facebook after we post the actual thing. I'm okay. Is it legal? Is it legal? Okay, have to do it again. Okay, I don't think we are. Is it a five or three? Three, three minute roll, okay? I will.
I don't know, they could do something.
Is that your preacher? Okay. You know, a while back, I did.
Keith, are you driving yet?
With my leather.
Thank you, sir.
Three-minute roll, that's all you get when you're driving. It's a busy.
Can't wait to see how you're doing, man.
You guys look like farmers, Mr. Bliss.
Yeah.
Front row. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
See, I want a lot of good people around me protecting.
Okay, it's almost there, are we ready? Good evening, and tonight, we welcome you to the Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It is August 4th, 2020, 7:00 PM. We are in the council chamber, Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. We would like to start with our invocation with Pastor Keith Henson. We appreciate you coming. Oh, is that you? I thought it was you. Oh, okay. Come on up, Keith. I thought you looked different. And then we'll follow by our flag salute.
It's the mass.
It is the mass.
Let's pray. Father, we just give you praise today that we have life and we have opportunity to meet together in this place. Lord, that these who, who lead our city, these who serve our city so well, Lord, we just ask your blessing upon them. Give them wisdom in everything that they do. Lord, help each of us to esteem each other higher than ourselves. And Father, just may your mercy and grace be shed abroad upon us. We give you praise today in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Selby?
Yes, here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Here.
Are there any presentations and proclamations?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any visitors tonight?
Madam Mayor, I have one visitor that has requested to speak, Mr. Don Blos.
Okay. Come on up, Mr. Bliss.
Thank you very much, Don Blos, 301 South Richland Road in Yukon, and also CEO for Spanish Cove Housing Authority, which is Yukon's municipal public trust. So, anyway, thank you for letting me speak. I wish I would have been here last meeting when the health department was here, but this is why I'm here. I want to talk about masks and I am urging you guys to consider a masking requirement for the city. So, it's unfortunate, I've had a huge public health background, familiar with emergency response. This response to COVID-19 has been really a tragedy because we have a lack of, of public health leadership really being in charge at all levels of government. So, unfortunately, the nation has not really done a whole lot and the state hasn't done a whole lot, and they've kind of thrown this thing in your lap, which is a tragedy in itself. So, but in the absence of, of really protective safety measures that we can take as citizens for our community, you know, the simple things that we can do, social distancing, as you can see here, and everybody in here is wearing a mask, that's awesome. Those are, those are the basic two things that will keep us safe. We have a population, we are considered a senior-friendly community and as a representative for Spanish Cove, you know, I'm not sure that we feel that that's safe in this community. Just looking at the data, I'd looked at it yesterday. Yukon made a huge leap from where it was up to seventh in the state. I don't know where it is today, but we, we are a hotspot in this community. And my residents will tell me that they're afraid to get outside, or at least some of them. And then many of them have asked me to, just to make a note to you guys that they're at the point now where they're willing to and needing to go to Oklahoma City to shop because they have a mask requirement, or local stores that have a mask requirement. They're just not feeling that safe. So, I'm sorry that this has fallen on, at a city level, but it is the right thing to do for our community. It's the one thing that really preaches, love your neighbor as yourself. I know we have some that feel like it's a constitutional right to not wear masks, but this is a different day and age. A temporary solution is needed, it can be removed, you can put a date on it, but I just would urge you guys to consider putting something on a future agenda for a masking requirement. And I think most of the health professionals in this community would, would say amen to that. So, anyway, thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. We'll move on. Recede as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as a Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 21st, 2020. B, payment of material claims in the amount of $331,417.93. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second, discussion?
Oh, sorry.
No discussion? All right, let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Consent Docket, number one. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A, the minutes of the regular meeting of July 21st, 2020; B, payment of material claims in the amount of $324,354.06. The resignation of Steve Wilson from and the appointment of Rhonda Dennis to the Board of Adjustments representing Ward 4 as recommended by council member Eric Gilliland. D, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August 18th, 2020, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Dennis was not able to be here this evening. I just want to give a quick introduction as to who Rhonda Dennis is. She's lived in Yukon most of her life, graduated in 1985 from Yukon High School. She's a self-employed certified medical transcriptionist for 28 years. She's served in the community as a board member and president of Yukon Rugby Club, Scrum Club, and has served on the Rosewood HOA and including serving as president for several years.
Any more discussion? Let's vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Right, do we have any reports of boards, commissions?
No reports shaving, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number three, consider approving ordinance 1407 and ordinance amending ordinance 1403 of the Code of Ordinance. Item number three, consider approving ordinance 1407 and ordinance amending ordinance 1403 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Yukon, that provides applicable fees and punishments for violations of the Code of Ordinances. That is hereby amended by repealing the fine and punishment section for violating an emergency proclamation issued by the mayor and declaring an emergency as recommended by Councilmember Wooten. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say something on this one. I brought this up to consideration because I'm concerned that the current way that we have it, this ordinance set up allows a mayor to create a proclamation and then tie this ordinance to it. And I feel that this could, in the wrong situation, lead to an abuse of power if it was used improperly. So, I feel that we need to look at it and make an adjustment on it, and so we can have a mechanism in place for, basically to keep us safe in the future.
And how would you suggest that we make that mandate or that proclamation, have people abide by that, because they'll do it out of the goodness of their heart?
Well, that's something that the council needs to come together and talk with and figure out. I think as a group, we could sit down and listen to outsiders, listen to people within the city, and come up with a plan.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think on the surface, the motion seems to be about the mask that are required, you know, in certain parts of the city and aspects as a result of the current emergency declaration. But it's, my vote is not going to be a reflection of whether or not I think people should wear masks. I wear a mask just about everywhere I go. So does my family. And so, it's not an issue of the masks. And I do want to say that I especially appreciate the hard work and thoughtfulness of our mayor. She has a hard job. But I would like people to understand that we're one of the only larger cities in the state that has utilized a mechanism to allow the mayor or a single person to create a mandate. Even though there may be some debates, some people feel like the state law does give mayors that authority, some people think that it doesn't. But Oklahoma City and Tulsa, who both passed mask mandates, brought it to the council, and the city council voted on those mandates.
Was that for a citywide mask mandate?
Yes. The city councils voted on those mandates. It was not issued by the mayor. And the issue, like Mr. Wooten said, is the previous ordinance has created a mechanism by which the mayor not only has the sole discretion of the wording and verbiage of an emergency declaration, but by default, creates, automatically creates, an enforceable ordinance. That's what happened many years ago among this council. I think it was in the 60s, if I remember right, when the original ordinance to enforce emergency declaration went into effect. And then this council, before I was sworn in, amended that ordinance with a new ordinance 1403, allowing the enforcement of $700, or a fine of $700, or up to three days in jail for not complying with an emergency declaration of the mayor. So, this vote is not a vote on whether or not people should wear masks. This vote of the council, and this council needs to take serious note that we, this body, has given authority to a single person to create an ordinance that the council does not get to vote on. That is my concern, and that my vote will reflect my belief that that is inappropriate.
Was that a concern?
But this is not, this does not state that. This is about the fines. And, you know, we haven't had any fines issued with the mask mandate so far. I talked to Chief Corn. He said there hadn't been any fines. There probably won't be. But, you know, it's there to protect our citizens, our city staff, our, those that like to frequent restaurants and bars. But who knows what the future holds? There could be a major catastrophe, and the mandate could be very crucial to fines. So, it's, the fines should stay in place. And this does not state that it gives the council the authority to vote on the mandates. This is about fines only.
Right. So, if, that's why, that's why I want to make clear that the vote is not a vote to not wear masks. The vote is a vote of this council to say, "The people of Yukon are all subject to the pen of the mayor."
No, this vote says that they are subject to.
Essentially. So, the only way, because of the state law, the only way to effectively not allow the mayor to have that authority is to undo the punishment mechanism. Then we need to come back, we have to come back to the board and decide what will we do? Because if a tornado rips through town and we need an emergency declaration, or some other situation that's unforeseen, we do need mechanism by which we can enforce that. But that mechanism, I'm very concerned about that authority being in the hands of one person.
Judge Miller, would you explain to us why ordinance 375 was created, even though that's not up for discussion currently? And then, Mr. Crosby, will you explain to us why we voted on that ordinance just a month or two ago, 1403? Why we felt the need?
Judge, could you come to the podium, please?
Mayor, members of the council, I was not involved with the city when ordinance 375 was passed. So, I can't tell you what the council's thinking was. It appeared that they were looking down the road. They were concerned about a tragedy, a tornado, a fire, something that could adversely affect this city tremendously. And they were making plans so they would be ready to respond to that. And that's the only suggestion I can give you as to what the council's thinking was. I have talked to one of the council members, and that's what he told me, that they were just looking at some long-range planning. You know, we're in tornado season right now, and if a tornado came through and did a lot of damage, we started having looting and those kind of problems. They said, "We need to respond. We need the ability to respond right now. We don't need to call meetings and post notices and do all those things. We need an answer right now." And that's what he told me, and he was a council member at the time.
Would a pandemic fall underneath that guideline?
I'm sorry?
Would a pandemic fall underneath that guideline of why we would need one?
It does. It talks about public health issues. Yes, ma'am.
Has that privilege ever been abused?
It hasn't been in Yukon, as far as I know. I'm like Councilwoman Yonda. I understand, under the current proclamation, there has been, there has been no citations given, there's no fines. I understand that some individual citizens have made comments to managers of restaurants that, "You have employees who aren't wearing a mask. I would appreciate it if you would change that." But those are individual citizens, and as far as I know, the city has taken no enforcement steps at all.
They've gone out and educated, am I right, Chief Corn, and those restaurants have complied? Okay.
I would note that the term abused, when we're talking about power, is subjective and relative. Some people would consider a mask mandate to be an abuse of power. Most of us wouldn't necessarily take that view, but some would. So, I just want to make that note.
But again, thank you for explaining that. We're not here to discuss ordinance 375, but I just wanted you to explain that for us, so we'd all be clear on that. And ordinance 1403, Mr. Crosby, that was decided back several months ago, and what was our principle? Do you remember for being that?
The problem is, is that if you don't have an enforcement item on there, it means that the proclamation, it's just a proclamation, and it has no, anybody in the world could violate it or anything else, no matter what the emergency might be. And the thinking was, is that there need to be some sort of fine or responsibility that they could get, a warning or a fine up to a certain amount, which we are limited on what we can do because we're not a court of record. And that's why the judge and people and attorneys I've been talking to came up with a fine that someone may be fined from zero up to $700 and three days in jail. And that's for the enforcement of any proclamation. It's not an ordinance.
Right.
And when the proclamation goes off, that, you know, the fine may be there, but there'd be no reason to fine anybody or charge somebody with that, because the, you know, it's just a mechanism to operate should someone, or be in an emergency, that they need to do it. And again, it's like all the other fines we have for speeding, or, you know, trash, or any of the other things. It's there for an enforcement only.
Right. I would like to think people could govern themselves about speeding, and we didn't have tickets. But obviously, there has to be some kind of incentive to not speed, some kind of incentive to keep the public safe.
Some of those seat belts and other things that people do.
Right.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Chief Corn, is it already against the law in Yukon to riot? Is that an enforceable violation?
That's a broad term that would encompass several statutes.
Okay. Would it be against the law to loot?
Yes.
Or destroy property, or vandalize property?
Yes.
So, all those things are already a violation of the law?
They are.
Okay, thank you. I would put forth the idea that any time the mayor, whether it's Ms. Selby, Ms. Selby, or any other mayor that we may have in the future, that if it is important enough and big enough to put the pen and require people to adhere to that declaration, that it's important enough for the elected officials of the city to have a vote on it.
Again, we're on.
There could be a mechanism by which that happens. We could create a new ordinance that says, "Any emergency declaration triggers an emergency meeting of the council within 24 hours" to then discuss and vote on an enforcement of that declaration.
Exactly. And that could be discussed, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. We're discussing ordinance 1403 and approving ordinance 1407. Is there any more discussion?
Well, I think the council was asked, "What would we suggest?"
When?
Well, you asked Mr. Wooten that a little while ago. And so, that is what I would suggest.
Thank you again. We're back now to this. If that is what the council wants, the majority of the council wants to discuss, then that is what we'll discuss at a later agenda item. As I see the reason, my personal opinion for the reason for a proclamation is, during tornado season, if several of us are out of town, then we don't have enough to make a vote in a quorum. And so, that would be necessary then for one person to make that decision. Decisions are not made alone. Decisions are made with the, talking to council members, talking with residents, talking with health officials, and discussing this with the city officials and with our attorney. So, decisions are never made alone by the mayor. My decision was not made by myself. It was made by a group of people who then, I put my name to that. No one else has to live with that. No one else has to take that. I do that because of the position I stand in. Would I ever make a proclamation that you have to wear blue pants? No. Because I'm not here for power. I'm here to do what's best for the people of Yukon, and what our former mayors have done also. But again, we're here to discuss if we approve ordinance 1407. Any more discussion? Then let's vote.
Selby?
No.
Yonda?
No.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Kachini?
No.
Okay. Item 3A, then, will be stricken. Item 4, consider approving change order number 2 for the City of Yukon Emergency Operations Center in the amount of $2,070.38 to TCS Construction LLC to remove a part of the existing concrete footing at the police station. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second. Discussion? I think we all read about that in our notes. Let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, we still need an emergency clause on 1407.
Oh, I thought we didn't, because it didn't pass.
1407 is a new ordinance that will replace 1403.
Right, but we didn't approve it.
You're not approving 1403?
Consider approving 1407. It was a three to two vote, three saying no, that we would not approve it.
Okay.
Is that what happened?
It failed, therefore, 1403 would still be in effect.
I think you're correct.
So, 3A was stricken because of that.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Moving along. Item number 5, consider entering into a master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement at no cost with Omnia Partners Public Sector Purchasing Cooperative, formerly U.S. Communities, for products subjected to either the competitive bid or competitive proposal process in compliance with purchasing laws. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item number 6, consider approving the annual software maintenance renewal in the amount of $96,298.35 to New World System, Tyler Technologies, for the police department's public safety software, as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item number 7, consider approving the final plat for the Commons Health Center Parkway and Professional Circle, being part of the southeast quarter of Section 30, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item number 8, consider approving the service agreement with GeoSafe for 911 dispatch software in the amount of $15,000 for the term of July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021, as recommended by the police chief. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right. Is there any new business?
No new business tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll have our council discussion. We'll start with Councilman Gilliland.
Just want to let the police and law enforcement folks in our midst and in our community know that we do appreciate you, and we, your hard work is not unseen and unappreciated. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilman Kachini?
I wanted to make sure that everyone listening in knows that we have a visitor's section. So, I've received many phone calls and knocks on the doors, and I'm having some issues about some of the things that we do here. So, please, come to our town hall meetings, come to our city council meetings. I also want to wish, to remind all, help the veterans of our community. We had a call from the Dale Robertson Center that we had a veteran sleeping in boxes. So, we, our folks went down there, picked him up, and took him to the VA hospital. So, I want to thank those folks that called us in to help them. I also want to remind all those that the Yukon Veterans Museum Gala is still on, and will be at the Dale Robertson Center at September 17th, 6:00 PM. And the cost, as for the last eight years, has been $25. So, we won't get, you won't go broke. I want to also thank everyone's support for the new mobile unit of our museum. We will come out and bring the history to you. Also, be aware that our facility is open for visitors. Bus or carloads, we have the room for you. Thank you.
Councilman Wooten?
I'd like to thank the fire department and the police. They surprised my little boy with a drive-by for his birthday. And also, the sheriff showed up. So, it was fun. He got the chance to get embarrassed in the front yard and see his favorite people drive by. So, Chief, thank you.
Councilwoman Yonda, please.
Well, I want to thank Keith Henson for coming and saying our prayer at the last minute. And then also, thank you, Dawn, for your input on how we navigate this pandemic. And we just need to work together to protect our citizens and our community as we move forward. Thank you.
Right. Couple of things before we leave. We are beating Mustang in the census now. Thank you to everyone who has started it. We still have a little ways to go. We lack about 23% of our people. They need to fill out our census. Also, Mr. Crosby, let me be the one to say, our estimated sales tax is up 7.15%, and our use tax is up 36.22%. That is amazing. We appreciate. We appreciate people shopping local. I said in my closing statement, a lot of it, a while ago, but the rest that I want to say is, this has been a hard start, as Conrad wrote in the paper, and I don't take lightly what I do. Do I have the power to mandate? Yes. Could I, could I make it more like Mayor McCarron did when he shut down the city? I could. Do I want to? No. I don't feel right now, currently, that's our need for this city. But we look at those numbers daily, and I look at the people, we had another death in Yukon. The difference here is that I want you to know, I am not looking for political power. I'm not looking to become a career politician like some. I listen to the people around me, I listen to the city. Two weeks ago, in a study session, we all five discussed this proclamation, and three out of two agreed that the proclamation should stay. But as Eric and Jeff have been asking all along with their influences for a vote for an official ordinance rather than a proclamation, if that and only the council, if it's the council and only the council that requests that from us, then we will take it to a vote. It will not be due to Representative Stiegel, it will not be due to the anti-maskers, the Facebook, who are people who have become politicians, doctors, lawyer wannabes. It will not even be because the city manager asked that we take that to a vote. Because this week, I want to hear from the city council. And if they want to make an official mask for servers, cooks, and bartender ordinance, then we will do that. But it will be because this city council, who you've elected to represent this city and look out for the well-being of everybody. There's a group here, but there's also a big group here, and we want to protect everybody. But if that is the council's wishes, then that's what we will do at our next city council meeting, but only if it's the council's wishes. Be kind to one another, make the most of your tomorrow, and good evening. Meeting adjourned.